Hello, everyone, and welcome to the third session of our Church World Service webinar series, Carrying in Crisis Extended Study Sessions. We are so glad that you're here. I'm River Mary Hughes with Crisis Care Ministries. And we again know that you're coming from all across the United States as well as perhaps the world. We know we sometimes have international guests who are here. So we are so glad to be able to gather in this format. We're grateful to be able to gather as Bishop Gerlinghouse is here to help us think through embracing God's future without forgetting the past. Now, we've had a wonderful series so far. This is our third of four sessions, and we hope that you've received a link to the videos of our sessions. You can find those links and all things webinar at crisiscareministries.net. You'll find the schedule, details about Bishop Gerlinghouse, links to the videos. And you can also look at the bottom of the webinar hub at crisiscareministries.net to find resources from previous series that are there as well. You'll see a link to Bishop Mike's book, which you see featured on your screen right now, that you can order from Amazon or Fortress Press. It has questions and individual for individual reflection as well as for group discussion. And I personally highly recommend it. Because this webinar is updated regularly and the links are put on regularly, we do suggest that when you get to crisiscareministries.net, you click the refresh page. Throughout the webinar today, please feel free to type questions or comments in the question box, the question box, and we'll be able to see those and hopefully address those throughout the webinar as well as toward the end of our hour. If you requested an attendance certificate when you registered, you'll be receiving information about that by email. If you have questions, you can contact Heather Wilson and you can see her email address on the slide rotations here as well. Now I have one more announcement before we hear from Bishop Mike. Last week, we mentioned to you the possibility of a bonus session, and that session would be in the less formal Zoom format, a Zoom meeting format. We can now confirm that we will be scheduling that bonus discussion for those who have attended the webinar to date. This session will be on Tuesday, February 14th, same time, 11:00 a.m. Eastern, in an open Zoom meeting format. Cameras on, microphones on, ready so that we can have a great discussion with Bishop Mike, and that session will not be recorded. I will tell you that the meetings after the meetings that Heather Wilson and Bishop Mike and I have had have been really fascinating. It's been so fun to, we do do a technical follow-up meeting after these sessions, and we almost always get into some very interesting theological conversations as well. And we want to invite you to be a part of that. So that's Tuesday, February 14th, same time, and you'll be receiving information about that in your email. And now we welcome Bishop Michael Gerlinghouse, Bishop of the Arkansas Oklahoma Senate of the Evangelical Church in America. Welcome Bishop Mike.
Thank you, Mary. It's good to be here. I need to show my screen. There we are. Welcome back. It's good to have you back with us on this day. Here in Oklahoma where I live, we are all iced in, and I hope that wherever you are, the weather is better. You go about your business on this day. If not, we hope that the bad weather passes. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been talking about grief process, about how we experience loss and grief, particularly in the midst of change. Last week, we finished by talking about yearning and how faith communities can get stuck in their yearning for the past. They're yearning to recreate those golden ages or that perfect time that they have in their mind. We said that the trouble with yearning and this urge to recreate the past is that, number one, the context in which we live and work and do ministry has changed. And also the fact that our memories of the past have normally been kind of scrubbed, sanitized, and aren't probably fully real compared to what actually happened in the past. And so we're imagining recreating something that never existed. So today, we're going to move forward and talk about how do we begin to adapt to the changed reality? And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we get unstuck from that yearning and then move into a more nostalgic way of using our memories of the past as we then begin to step into God's future for us while drawing strength and hope and promise from the past. So that's kind of where we're going. And then we'll wrap up next week with some more ways of talking about how we embrace that future. So that's kind of what we're attending. I'm looking forward to the Zoom and bonus session where we'll have a chance to have some free flowing conversation and answer questions, hear your comments, your thoughts. I do a lot of learning when I hear people's questions and what they're thinking about the material that I'm still learning about even in the context of my ministry. So let's get moving here. I need to get my, there we are. So today, we're going to talk about adapting to the changed reality. In the process of grief, the way I think about grief process, this is generally the third task, adapting to the changed reality. And remember that these tasks aren't necessarily concurrent or in a line, but they can happen concurrently or in different orders, but it's just generally the one that we talk about, the third. William Worden, whose model I tend to use in talking about grief process in my ministry, says this, "How an individual or community works through Task Three, adapting to the changed reality, turns on either progress toward a recognition of their changed circumstances." So we have to work through our various levels of denial and uncertainty and this desire to recreate the past either turns on progress toward a recognition of changed circumstances, a revision of their representational models, we'll talk about that a little later, any redefinition of their goals, or else a state of suspended growth in which they are held prisoner by a dilemma they cannot solve. I'm trying to read that again. Or else they wind up in a state of suspended growth, or what we would call prolonged grief disorder, in which they are held prisoner by a dilemma they cannot solve. And that dilemma is you can't recreate the past. You can't bring that which you've lost back, particularly if what you've lost has been lost to death. So, before I pose a question to you to ponder as we go through today's session, I want to remind you, I hope most of you have at least heard this at some level in the past, but the difference between technical change and adaptive change. Technical change involves problem solving methods based upon the knowledge of experts and specialized skills. This approach to change is useful when problems are well defined, solutions are readily available, and the implementation process is clear. So if in your home you have leaky pipes, you call a plumber who knows how to fix leaky pipes. The plumber comes in, implements a process for replacing whatever needs to be replaced, and the leak goes away. That's a technical approach, a problem solving approach to dealing with something. And there are plenty of things within our faith communities that are technical problems and require technical responses. But so much of what happens to us and the problems that confront us when we are dealing with loss or with dramatic change that leads to loss and grief can't be fixed by technical solutions. You can't just simply come up with the right program and then everything will be better. And congregations that I work with are always trying to find that, that one perfect idea that'll fix everything. You know, if we just get the right band to play music, or if we just get the right leader, or if we just get, fill in the blank. And these are all technical approaches to what are adaptive problems. And so adaptive change requires new learning and emerges from the collaborative work of those addressing the challenge. Adaptive change is always a team sport. Facing adaptive challenges requires changes in people's values, attitudes, or habits of behavior. In other words, it requires something much, much deeper than just what are normally technical fixes. They may involve technical fixes as part of the adaptive change, but they are primarily not, they generally do not respond to technical problem solving methods. Adaptive changes are implemented through experimentation, just try stuff, trial and error, and creative imagination. And all this is based upon the work of Ronald Hifetz. And the very, very tiny print at the bottom of the screen is Leadership Without Easy Answers from that book, which was published in 1994. So keeping that in mind, let's talk a little bit about, kind of your, or think a little bit about your experiences. So I want you to just take a moment, we'll give you a little space to think of one challenge your faith community has faced or is facing because of the losses it's experienced. What technical fixes have you considered? And how might you rephrase the challenge as an adaptive question? Because I think that's really important as we think about embracing this future while continuing to be rooted in the past. We have to learn how to ask adaptive questions. So for example, a technical question would be, how can we pay our faith leader? Refrase that as an adaptive question, it becomes, what will leadership in our faith community look like in the future? See how the difference? Paying the faith leader may be part of that conversation, but the bigger question, the deeper question is one about leadership and how do we provide leadership within our faith community as we go forward? So think first for a moment about some of the faith challenge, you might even want to jot that down if you're taking notes. Think about something you've tried to fix with technical fixes that you might try to rephrase as an adaptive question. I know I didn't give you a whole lot of time to do that, but keep that process in the back of your mind, not only this week, but even as we go into next week's session. So, we want to talk about how we get unstuck from yearning. I like this, well, I like this picture. We were at Yellowstone Park a few years ago in the fall. We thought, oh, we'll go to Yellowstone in the fall, there won't be so many tourists. Wrong. Just getting into the park, you have to deal with backups like this. It was like Tulsa rush hour. Anyway, how do we get unstuck when we're, when we're driving, driving forward in trying to help people deal with this reality of yearning? Well, the first point is a simple, seems like a simple one, but in many ways it's not. The only way through grief is to grieve. And I think we've said this before in previous sessions, that you cannot circumvent grief. When you have a loss, particularly a significant loss, you have to deal with the grief. If you don't deal with it, it comes out sideways and results in conflict and dysfunction and all sorts of problems within the life of the community. And so the only way to grieve through grief is to grieve. You have to allow yourself to work through the various tasks or work on the various tasks, to experience and name the pain through lament, through, somebody mentioned last time, ritual. And that's another whole subject. But through a whole variety of means, you have to be able to allow the community to name and claim and express their grief at what has been lost. And the best way to do that, at least that I've found, and certainly in my pastoral ministry, is through narrative, through storytelling, through talking about what happened, why it happened, how you experienced it, by telling stories. One of the most important things I think about funerals, and which I'm kind of distressed that fewer and fewer people are doing formal funerals, is the opportunity to gather to tell stories about the one who has died. Because that's how you begin the process of moving that living relationship that you had with the person into one of memory. People will get asked the question over and over after a significant death. So what happened? How did the person die? Early on in the process, the bereaved people will often want to tell that story, tell it over and over and over again. Why? Because it's beginning to help them accept the reality of the loss. But at some point, at least in my working pastor with people, if you, if they hear the question, they'll say to me something like, if I hear the question, what happened, one more time, I'm going to just hit somebody. I'm so tired of talking about that. That's a sign that they're starting to, to move through that particular task towards some resolution. Now, what often happens in our culture around death is that a kind of a conspiracy of silence grows up around the bereaved person, which is actually not very healthy. So instead of saying, so can you tell me what happened, or how are you doing, or what's really hard for you right now? People stop talking about it. They're afraid that if they name the person who's died or say, how are you doing with so-and-so's, you know, having lost so-and-so to death, that it will remind the people of that person to make them feel bad. When in fact, all they want to do particularly early on is hear that person's name. I love the cultures that have like a whole year where people are checked on, and then at the end of the year have some kind of formal way of, of once again remembering the person who's died and celebrating that person's life. Because the person who's, who's bereaved thinks about that person every day, particularly early on. Congregations, faith communities are the same way. They need to tell their stories. They need to tell the story of what happened and why it happened and how it happened. And in order to get a sense of what that means for them and for their community, for them as a community going forward. And so creating spaces for people to tell their story is extremely important, which is one of the reasons why now when I work with congregations, I like to ask, so when was this congregation really at its best? Tell me about that. And then say, what is it that you miss about that? And to allow people to tell those stories and own them and claim them. As I already kind of hinted in the first bullet point here, we need to acknowledge the pain and the sadness of a loss. You know, if, if, if our, I just had this conversation with somebody just recently, just last few days. And we were talking about the fact that there's, that their attendance has really declined. And, and all of the empty pews, and we talked about that. We talked about how sad it is that they have so many empty pews. And as, but as we talked, I also said, do you look, also look at the pews that actually have people in them? And to think about what, what gifts those are. It was a short conversation. But we started by acknowledging the pain and the sadness of the fact that people who used to be there simply aren't there anymore for a variety of reasons. I think lament is an important part of that. And I think there's a real value in allowing congregations, even formally, and there are great services out there within the Christian tradition of lament, but also with, within the Jewish tradition. I mean, the lament psalms are powerful and can be used to help faith communities express their, their sadness and their pain at the losses they've experienced. And I'm guessing, not knowing real well, but that there are also opportunities and spaces and patterns for lament in other religious traditions as well. Because the alternative is just to shove it all under the, under the carpet and swallow all that pain and sadness. And anybody who's ever experienced loss and tried to swallow all their pain and sadness knows how it can tear you up. And it does the same thing to communities. Part of learning of getting unstuck is to actually promote social engagement, to encourage people to come together, to talk, to share their stories, to support and care and listen to one another. Now, people respond to grief in very different ways. Some people just need to be alone for a while to process things, particularly at the beginning. And so if people separate themselves from the community for a time, that's okay. But you still need to make sure that somebody is staying in touch, connecting in some fashion with those who need some time to process it themselves before being, coming back into community. But if you just let them go, it's going to be harder and harder and harder to reengage them in the life of the community. Others are going to want to be together, to talk together, to worship together, to pray together, to encourage and support one another. And in time, you want to help people come back together in healthy ways. And that's part of why these lament services can be so meaningful and helpful to communities that have had significant loss. We want to build motivation for change, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in bits, so I'm not going to dig in here for that. And we want to help people find new reasons, new aspirations for making meaning. We, because when change and loss comes to us in any form, both as individuals and as a community, it will challenge our identity, it will challenge our understanding of what it means to be alive, to be engaged in the world, and to just to be human. And we need to create spaces where we can begin to talk about not only the meanings that have been lost, but the new meanings that are emerging. And finally, this getting unstuck process, this process of adapting to the loss will involve both focus on the loss and on the restoration and moving forward in some faction. And they both kind of happen at the same time. And so we might be telling stories about the past and acknowledging our pain and sadness of that loss, at the same time trying to bring people together, motivate them, and help them step forward. At the beginning of this process, you focus more on loss and less on restoration. As you work through the various tasks of grieving, you begin to focus less on loss and more on restoration. So it's a balance and it's a dance as you go through this. Want to talk a little bit about restoration grief work, because that's part of the getting unstuck. It may mean learning new skills and mastering some new skills for how we engage the community beyond our doors, for how we function as a faith community. The way that we used to do our various worship and liturgy and such may not work anymore now that we're a smaller community of faith and may require some new skills. May raise, mean raising up some new leaders and teaching them how to provide that leadership. Again, just recently, I was talking with, it was last week, I was in one of our little congregations, and they've had a pastor, but they can no longer afford a pastor. So we were talking about what we call Synod Authorized Ministry Teams. That's three laypeople who are identified and then equipped to lead these small congregations in the absence of being able to afford an ordained and fully trained pastor. And so they're working on a few things. I'll probably be back with them this next month to start teaching them and working with them to learn some basic skills. Now, I always tell them that really what they get out of this training is an advanced first aid card. And we always try to hook them up with a pastor in another community somewhere that they can call on if they, if they need support, encouragement, if they have questions, if they run into something they just really can't handle. And so sometimes this restoration works requires learning some new skills. It may have required some work around a change of identity, coming to terms with who we are now and as we think about moving forward. It may require some psycho, psychosocial transitions and changes. How we not only think about our identity, but how we understand what that does to our psychology about, as a community, but also how we engage the community beyond us. You know, the old, the old first church may not be the center of the community anymore, but in fact may need to learn new ways to engage the community around them. And it's about rebuilding of shattered assumptions about themselves, about ourselves and the world around us. And that can take a long time. So let's talk a little bit about nostalgia. Stopping here to see if, want to stop for just a moment. Do we have questions? Not seeing any.
Do you have a question? We actually have a comment. And it circles back to the technical change and the, and the adaptive change. The reflection was, the question to ask is, how can we build our faith community? And I'm going to guess that that might be an adaptive question rather than, you know, a technical question. But it occurs to me, is it helpful to have both the technical questions as well as the adaptive questions side by side? And would you go a little bit deeper as into that question of how can we build our faith community?
Sure. Yeah, no, that is, that is more of a technical question. And so often, when I hear people talking about technical and adaptive change, it's like technical change is somehow bad and adaptive change is good, which of course is not what Hifetz says at all. But, but that some things are technical, require technical fixes, and some things are more adaptive. The problem is when we try to fix adaptive questions about, try to fix adaptive questions with technical fixes. Any, any more than you can't do it the other way. I mean, you know, if, if your plumbing's leaking and you get a committee together to talk about the meaning of plumbing in the workings of a building, it's not going to stop the water. So, so you know, if you try to make it, things that require technical, technical approaches, you're not going to be asking adaptive questions, you know, to fix them. But the question of how do we rebuild our faith community will most likely lead to technical solutions. I would probably rephrase that to say, what does it mean to be a faith community today? It's much more adaptive. So rather than focusing on rebuilding, you focus on what does it mean to be a faith community in the world today? And how has that changed? And then how can we, how can we explore that question in ways that will begin to suggest ways that we might rebuild our faith community? And it might lead to answering the question, wow, we need to create a whole different kind of faith community to, to be a faith community in our, you know, in our, our world today. And people, at least in our tradition, experiment, experimenting with all kinds of different ways to be faith communities. We have faith communities that are housed in, in coffee houses and cafes. There's a one in Texas I encountered a few years ago that are, they're a church without a building. They, they own 10 acres of land and they worship under a, in a gazebo and do a lot of work around creation care. It's not like any faith community I've ever been in, but it was pretty cool to be with them this Sunday. We were there. So, but that started by saying, by asking that more adaptive question of how do we adapt our faith community to the world in which we exist right now? And what might that look like? And how can we try some stuff? You know, you might try an outdoor worshiping community in Minnesota, and in January you go, this was a really dumb idea. You know? But, you know, and so we might all remember back to when we were in, in school and learning the scientific method, you know, where you make hypotheses, you test the hypotheses, you learn from, from that, and then you try some, you know, you try a new experiment as you keep pushing the edges of what you know or what you think you know. So, yeah, I think that's, but as we think about, say, okay, we're going to, we're going to try doing, creating a faith community in a cafe. Because we think that'll open up our doors to reach people in new ways, you know, kind of create a religious Starbucks. So that, that's kind of our experiment. Well, that experiment might require learning how to run a cafe, which is kind of a technical thing. Because if nobody knows how to run a cafe, it's probably not going to work. It might require, you know, thinking about, well, how are we going to market it? So those are technical aspects of the adaptive, you know, of the experiment. But you start by asking that bigger question, what does it mean? How does it look to be a faith community? What is it? What is, what are we even supposed to do as a faith community in the world today? So that's, and we're going to get into more of that, I think, next, next time. That's a great question.
The questioner said, thank you.
You're welcome. Let's talk a little bit about nostalgia. Because nostalgia, as we, as you might remember from last time, is about drawing strength from, from our past. Rather than yearning to recreate the past, how do we begin to learn from our past and for the sake of the, of the present and the future? The work that I, that I follow in terms of nostalgia is some exceptional research that was done by this guy Clay Rottledge and colleagues in a variety of different places around the world, including in Asia and Europe. by this guy Clay Rutledge and colleagues in a variety of different places around the world, including in Asia and Europe. And his book is nostalgia, psychological resource. It is basically a collection of the various experiments that he and his colleagues ran around the question of nostalgia. And then analysis and report, it's, it's, it's not light reading, but it's, it's exceptional in terms of helping us understand that nostalgia is not a problem, it's not something that needs to be fixed, but indeed is a, is a human coping mechanism that is shared by people across cultural boundaries. It's just something we humans do. And it's part of our need to maintain some continuity or some sense of continuity with our past, which I think we touched on last time. So according to Rutledge, nostalgic memories help us with social connectedness, which we already have seen is something we want to do as we begin to break out of the pattern of yearning or, and work through our grief as faith communities. It can help us build self-awareness and self-esteem. That it's the, if I, if I've done it once, I can probably do it again, even if the, you know, if, even if the context is different. But if I, you know, if in the last place I lived, I was able to make friends, I should be able to do that again now. I, I have, it helps us get a sense of our own skills and mastery, even though that may have been challenged by, by the changes we've experienced. But we can tap into those things and say, how can I use the best of who I am now in this present moment, in the most effective way and make us feel good about ourselves? Next time we're going to talk a little bit about appreciative inquiry as a process, where we do in fact tap into the strengths from the past for the sake of the future. But that's just a teaser for next time. Can help us build meaning and significance, again, that sense of continuity. That just because we've gone through significant change or loss doesn't mean we have, we have lost our meaning or significance as a community or as individuals, it means that it's changed and to explore how it's changed. And what are we going to carry forward? From the past, in terms of our meaning and significance and how, how do we need to, to think about that in new ways? Nostalgic memories can give us a sense of vitality, we can remember how excited we were in the past. I do so many of these, I can't remember when I've told a story, so forgive me if I've told a story in this group before. But my, my favorite story about that is of a little church in Oklahoma. Where, where we went down to this congregation, thinking we were going to talk to them about closing. And it was early on in my trying a new approach to working with these congregations. And so I thought, well, I'm going to ask a different question this time. So we were sitting around with the council, half a dozen folks, mostly 60 plus. And the congregation was only, is only about 40 years old. So some of them remember being there at the beginning, some of the folks that were sitting around the table. And so I said, tell me a time when things were really great in your congregation, that, that kind of golden moment. And so one of the women at the table started talking to me about when they were first getting started and how they were meeting in the library, I think. And every Sunday they get there early and a group of them would put up chairs and then they do worship and they take the chairs down and and, and it was just a really rich time as the congregation was starting to grow and new people were starting to come. And so I, instead of saying, okay, you just need to get over that, I said, so what was really great about that time? She thought about it for a few minutes and she finally said that we were working together, she said that we were working together to accomplish this thing, we had a common sense of, of, of mission and ministry and and I said, and what might that have to say to where you're at right now? And she smiled and she said, if we work together, we, we can accomplish a lot. To which one of the other people at the table said, yeah, but we were so much younger then. To which the first person said, we just have to do it slower. And you know what, since we've had that congregation, they have reclaimed that nostalgic memory, that sense of working together. And they are doing really interesting ministry, they're trying stuff. They have a new sense of energy and vitality as they have tapped into that nostalgic memory and drawn it forward in the presence, not to write, none of them want to start putting chairs up and taking chairs down or moving back to the library, that's not what they're about. But they said, gosh, if we work together, we can do some stuff. They're not going to become a huge big congregation, they've grown a little over the last couple of years. They may still close. But if they close now, they're going to close, they're going to go out of business doing ministry and feeling good about what, what they're about. And so that's kind of how these nostalgic memories can, can work. Nostalgia contributes to belonging. When we tell the stories of our past, again, it gives us that sense of not only of continuity, but of being connected. And when we go through significant change or loss, it can disrupt that sense of belonging. And as we talk, I think a little bit later, one of the reasons that people resist change is because they're afraid that they're going to get disconnected, that they're no longer going to feel like they belong, that they feel alienated or isolated from, from the rest of the community for one reason or another. And so being able to tell those stories, to have that sense of continuity to know that we're connected, even if things are changing, is really, is really important and nostalgia can help us do that. It raises optimism, we already kind of talked about that, if I did it before, I can probably do it again. If we worked together in the past, we can work together now. It'll be different, it'll look different, we may have to do it slower. But we can do it, it can inspire us. It can boost our creativity. Or, and it can, I like this quote from Saul Bellow's book, Mr. Sandler's Planet. Nostalgic memories keep the wolf of insignificance from the door. As we remember our past, as we mourn what we've lost. And, but as we draw strength from those memories and begin to move those memories into a place where they can be a source of strength and not just a source of, of yearning and lament. We begin to rediscover the significance of who we are, where we've been and where we're going. And that can help us then move forward. I say this as if this is a simple thing, it's not. The task of adapting to the change reality is a task, it takes time, it takes intentionality. And we're going, different faith communities are going to engage at different levels and with it at different speeds. We talked about last time, different people within the community mourn and grieve differently, they bring their own understandings of how to do that. The congregation's own grief system will determine how quickly they can move to this more of an adaptive stance. But as you work through the grief, as you name the losses, you begin to start to be able to tell these stories and draw strength from the past instead of simply being stuck there. Embracing God's future, how are we doing timelines? Okay, we're good. Embracing God's future involves a balance. I like the image of the bicycle wheel, if any of you are bicyclists, you'll probably appreciate this. I, I don't do much bicycling these days, but when I was younger, I did a lot of biking, touring and that kind of thing. But the thing about a bicycle wheel is the way the spokes work is at the top of each spoke, there's a little knob that you turn to adjust the tension on the rim. And so if the tension is wrong between the spokes, the wheel will either wobble or bobble back and forth. And so you have to what they call true the wheel. And that is to balance the tension in the spokes, so the wheel goes around and can move the bike forward. So when I talk about balance, I don't talk about finding some status quo or some homeostasis, which I know that's what family system spoke talks about is communities always want to go to this kind of sense of homeostasis. But instead, this kind of dynamic kind of tension of, of things that allow us to move forward. And so any community need to have a balance between a sense of continuity and, and a desire for innovation. Being connected to the past and yet being willing to be open and adaptive and innovative as you think about the future. We need to have a tension between dealing with loss and grief and that more restorative kind of work of embracing the new life of wherever we're, we feel we're being called to go. And if we keep all of those things in this balance, we'll be able to continue to have a sense of moving, moving forward as a community rather than being stuck with a wobbly wheel. That doesn't seem to be going anywhere. So all of these pieces need to be there, I'm going to stop there again, questions, comments?
I, I don't, I don't see any new questions. But there are some thoughts that I, I would want you to maybe expand upon a little bit. You know, we've had this conversation at the meeting after the meetings about, about belonging and how that is actually tied to a sense of survival in many ways, it's kind of a deep brain kind of connection. And nostalgia being a very, very important part of that. I, I also hear you talking about many things that would be components we would find in cognitive behavioral therapy, what do I believe about myself? What do I want to believe about myself? And I hear you doing that on a congregational level.
Yeah, absolutely. Because every congregation, every faith community I've ever been around has a story about itself. And, and in a narrative that they tell themselves about who they are, what they're about, what they should be. And it's, it's subtext, it's not something that necessarily everybody's even consciously aware of. And, and that's why integrating new members is, is so important. You need to help newcomers become a part of that narrative and a part of that story. And, and the narrative is always being written and rewritten, chapters are always being added. But friend of mine tells the story of, of a newcomer that came into the, this, the congregation they were serving. And got invited to help in the kitchen for funeral lunch or something and the person said, what can I do to help? Well, you, you, you can cut the, the cakes, nine, nine by 13 pans of, of cakes or bars. Depending on what part of the world you're from. So the person got out a knife and cut up the, cut up the pan of bars. And one of the other people in the kitchen said, oh, oh, you did that all wrong, you did that all wrong. And they're like, what? I cut them up? Well, you did three bars, you know, across and we only do two or something like that anyway. Well, they, they, that's part of that subtext, it's part of the narrative, this is how we as a, as a community, cut a pan of bars. And guess what, the person never volunteered to help in the kitchen again. But we, yeah, we do, we tell ourselves these, these stories as, as communities and everybody else in the kitchen, because they've been there a long time, knew how to cut a panel. If that's a seemingly a little thing, but we, I think we do that to newcomers as we bring people into the community. We assume that somehow I asked Moses, they're going to just absorb all this stuff. And I think that's true for a pastor or other faith community leader that comes into a new community needs to learn that those, that story. Another friend of mine, retired pastor says, yeah, the, the first, the first year in a new congregation is like walking through a cow pasture in the dark. Your house has been something. And that's because you don't know those stories, those defining stories. And I think before you can start really helping a congregation, which is why I love the timeline exercises. And, and those other kinds of give opportunity to tell those stories, yeah, it's and those stories are about belonging.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, we got a little bit of timeline here, let's move on. Okay, let's put in this doubt, talk a little bit, this is going to expand what we've already been talking about. Putting some more concrete, some concrete stuff on, on what we've been saying. Adapting the loss is really about putting nostalgia to work. Rather, rather than just dumping the past and trying to figure out what we're going to do in the future, nostalgia can actually help us in this adaptive work as we shape questions, so instead of just asking what, what does my, what, what does being a faith community look like in the here and now? We can say, let's tell a story about what a faith community has looked like and how that has changed over time. Already because every community goes through changes, it's in fact, it's always going through changes. I see one of the great oxymorons is the only thing that doesn't change about life is change. And change. If you look at the world around us, change is going on all the time, even this beautiful lawn that we're looking at in this slide was not the same the, the next day, new blades of grass had come up. You know, others had turned brown, there were leaves in different places, I mean, you know, there's always change going on. And it's either the change of growth or the change of decay, there's very little in nature that's said, that's in a steady state. And whenever something achieves a steady state, it usually doesn't stay there for very long. I'm not much of a chemist, but trust me. But just from the natural sciences people, I know if anything ever achieved steady state, it's for microseconds and then it changes again, so. How do we put nostalgia to work? We need to talk about external adjustments. Asking these kinds of questions. How does the losses we've experienced affect our everyday functioning as a community? Sometimes you discover things you didn't miss until they're gone, things you just sort of took for granted, how is, how is this loss affecting roles and skills? And how, what does it mean to learn to be, for example, a smaller faith community than what we were? And to explore those questions, how do we begin to adjust to this new reality? By talking about what used to be and what, where we are now and where we might be called to be, so to create that continuity. To say, what do we miss? Maybe things we just took for granted. What are the new rules, roles and skills that we may need to start thinking about? And again, some of these are, are going to have technical answers, some of these like learning how, how, how are we going to be a smaller faith community in the face of decline? Is a more adaptive question. And it's important to name that and to just, to identify that so that you're not trying to use the wrong kind of problem solving to address the other kind of problem. This is an interesting one and one you can't do right to start with, you got to do some other work first, but what benefit might there be in, in, in the loss? What benefit might there be in the loss? Gosh, I just had a conversation like this with somebody the other day. Who said this and this and this happened to me and I thought it was the worst thing that had ever happened to me. And this is what I've discovered, it's freed me to do this and this and this in ways that I never imagined possible. So while I really don't like the fact that I went through this loss, there's some goodness come out of it. And, and then how do we begin to make meaning after loss? And how do we begin to draw meaning and you can again do that by tapping into some of that nostalgia. But there are also internal adjustments, so those are all external things in terms of how things function in, in, in the, in the community. But there's also some inter, as we've mentioned, rebuilding identity. But identity can lead to personal growth. This is something Rutledge says about personal growth that we draw from nostalgia. Psychological growth requires exploration and those of you have more, much more psychological training than I do. You can affirm that. But the pursuit of new experiences and ideas and the willingness to be open to alternative ways of thinking. A number of studies demonstrate that nostalgia promotes growth in part by exploring, inspiring exploration. And again, that's that whole idea of we've, we've done this exploring stuff before in our past. Whether it was at the beginning of the faith community's life, whether it was when we, when we faced another experience of loss. Where we, we had to reimagine ourselves in some way. When we had an influx of new members, we've done this before. And if you want to even go back, the better reason I think it's so important for us to study his church history or the history of our religious tradition is to hear all those stories that of times when the people of faith have adapted to what was going on around them and emerged in positive ways. I mean, I, I think of even the, the story of the I mean, I I think of even the the story of the exile, which is from the Hebrew scriptures. That was a horrible, horrible, horrible experience. And yet what emerged from that at the end was a renewed community that had redefined who they were, what they were about. It took centuries to figure that out. And really, but and so that that but even something that catastrophic. Could in fact. Be drawn, that experience could be drawn from for new. New growth. We want to imagine, think about, reflect upon how loss affects one sense of self. We've talked about that. And ask our question, who are we now? Does that mean, how is it connected to the past, how do we go forward? There are spiritual adjustments. Perceptions of our of meaning. And we need to ask ourselves and explore with our communities, how the losses we've experienced affect our beliefs, our values and our assumptions about the world. What is God calling us to do and to be? How do we refine redefine the direction and purpose of our ministry? And how do we reapreaise our relationship with the past? I I don't believe in depending upon your own theological tradition, this is my theology, is that. Humanity's understanding of God has changed over the the millennia. As we've walked together with God, I'm not sure that whether God has changed or not, that that's a bigger subject. But our understanding of who God is, what God is about and how God relates to us certainly has. And you could argue that it's changed God too, but I'm not going to go there. But how how has this experience changed our beliefs, our values and our assumptions about the world? From a theological point of view, from a spiritual point of view. What have we learned new about about who God is, what God is about, what God is calling us to be? I think those are extremely important questions to ask. And we know that our theology today is different than it was a century ago. Then it was different at the time of the refle- cremation, at the time of, you know, the height of the medieval period. Those things do change over time as we wrestle with and continue to think about who God is and what God's about and who we are as God's people. Here's some just some thoughts about how we reconsider our assumptions about ministry, what is our place in the in society? How the how does the world around us? Excuse me, how does the world around us consider our faith tradition? For those of us in mainline Christian communities. Some more than others, our our religious tradition used to be at the center of social life in. In the United States. And that has changed dramatically since the middle of the twentieth century. Faith traditions have become much more marginalized. More or less. So how does the world around us consider our faith tradition in twenty twenty-three? You need to ask ourselves whether the world around us thinks organized religion is even worthwhile. Most days, I think the answer to that for a lot of people is no. I think. Starting with the post baby boom generations, organized anything isn't necessarily considered all that worthwhile. It's, things are much more fluid in terms of of how people connect and relate to one another and social media has had a huge impact on that. Those are things we're not going to change. I mean, tomorrow morning, we're not all going to wake up and suddenly the whole world thinks organized religion is the best thing on the planet. We need to figure out how to adapt to that reality. What does that mean that people, rather than saying, oh, and people are opposed to organization or grumbling about that? How do we change our understanding of ministry in a world that doesn't think organized religion is worthwhile? Where religious participation is in decline. So rather than thinking about how are you going to change the world around us back? To what we remember? How do we begin to change our approach to the to? To to the work of our to the ministry of our faith communities? In in that kind of a world? Those are huge, 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 huge questions, I think, and ones that many people in many different places are wrestling with. It calls for experimentation and trying stuff. How are our assumptions about our faith tradition? Both validated and challenged by what's going on in the world around us? And then what are our other assumptions, things we just assume are the way it should be, has to be or will be? That may need to be questioned. Well, we're coming up on time here, I'm going to stop there. And. And say, are there, in the last five minutes we got here, are there? Other questions or?
Well, there's a a nice, a very kind thank you, talking about how helpful this series has been and applicable to her current faith community and I thank you for that. So thank you for that feedback, Beth. I have a question for you that might stir up other questions as well. I'm just imagining and you've talked a little bit about how you work with congregations in your role as a bishop. So without telling us details, obviously, of your congregations. What does it look like for a congregation to get to the point where they want to ask you for help? You know, in general, how does a congregation know they're there?
Oh, that's a great question, I love that question. We talked, I don't know those last, I think it was last time, different congregations have different levels of of help seeking behavior. So it's probably different for every congregation. Sort of the same question is when does an individual know they need therapy? You know? And that's probably. Different question, you know. Or different answer for different people, you know, when does that come? But when I think that you start reaching out to your judicatory leaders. When when you are feeling stuck, like you like, there's a wall there and you just can't figure out how to get or get out, round it, over it, under it. And. And and you can kind of just have a sense that the congregation is 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 more abundant in in a place. It it may be when somebody coming to your congregation from the outside, maybe a potential new member who comes and then doesn't come back. And and you get some outside feedback. From from somebody and you think, wow, maybe I'm not seeing things and I need somebody to help me see things more clearly. I know when we, when I was in at Campus Ministry in South Dakota, we were doing a strategic planning process that. We invited the local Episcopal campus pastor to sit on our strategic planning team. And she said, I don't know anything about Lutheran, so I said, exactly. I said, whenever we start be talking to Lutheran, I want you to hold the red flag up and say. Timeout, timeout, you're talking in in language and I need, you know, so we we start to start with bringing somebody in. We didn't know if we had problems or not, so we said, well, let's bring somebody in and get a little outside perspective, so.
Yeah, well, there's a comment here as well about especially for pastors, when do we need therapy? There's a thank you for what you just said there as well. You know, I'm thinking about the congregation that couldn't mow the grass that you talked about last week, when it's actually affecting your level of functioning, when some of the daily activities within the congregation are not not functional, it's definitely time to be asking for help. But I'm going to guess that some congregations wait a little too long to ask for help.
Yeah, just like some people. Better be invited into a congregation when when they still had some level of health. I mean, if I go into a congregation that's, you know, was two hundred and worship and they're down to sixty or seventy and worship, I, we still got something to work with. But if they wait until they only have ten people in worship, it's much, you know, it's much, much harder at that point to to do anything that's going to really be helpful. You know. The, I think you go back to the to the conversation we had about prolonged grief disorder. It's when you start showing signs, showing some of those symptoms of being stuck. But but yeah, I think. Like like individuals, congregations, faith communities can wait. Too long. I think this again, talking from my own perspective, we try to stay in regular contact and communication with our congregations so that. Not all of them, someone would just do not see us, but and we try to respect that as much as we can, but. But try to stay in regular, so not not in an evaluative kind of way, but in a pastoral way. So that we kind of know what's going on, that's you can do that when you only have forty-five congregations, though. If you're in a judicatory that has, you know, hundreds of congregations, that's almost impossible unless you got a monstrous staff, so.
Well, I know that some of the our denominations are are faith judicatories will also have have really worked for their annual assessments to try to get at those the health of those congregations so they can keep an eye on it.
Yeah, but. Generally, we go and we're asked, but not, sometimes we we invite ourselves over.
That may be, maybe the meeting after the meeting that we have may want to hear, we may want to hear some of those stories as well, so. Well, we are at the top of our hour, I know you all join me in thanking Bishop Mike again for his wonderful and inspiring presentations. Thank you, we hope that to see you all next week for our final session and then for the bonus session as well, where again, we'll open up the mics. Open up the cameras and we'll just have more casual conversation in a not recorded setting. Remember to go to the webinar habit crisis care ministries.net for information about the series. Watch for information about the bonus session, be safe out there, folks, and thank you again, Bishop Mike.
Welcome, thank you.